Okay, so it is. Right? Okay, it is, I guess, six o'clock and we will call this meeting of the Community Development Committee and as a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to order. And we will go ahead and note the attendance. I see that we have Councilmember McHugh, Councilmember Christensen, Planning Commissioner Maruzak, and I'm not quite on the Zoom yet. It looks like you might have some people to promote, so we'll go ahead and do that. I'll see if I can remember from memory, since I'm not in the Zoom, so we could do kind of like a mic check. Is Commissioner Goodman on? Okay, how about Commissioner Lambert?
So Goodman has officially resigned.
Oh, yes, okay.
He is now an employee for the city.
Okay, excellent. Congratulations. All right, so Commissioner Lambert? Commissioner Lambert, okay, let's see.
You're not going to show him?
Yeah, thanks. I'll make sure I get all the names right. Commissioner Testman? Some Commissioner Testman, Commissioner Aleth? Oh, I thought I heard a mic there.
This is Commissioner Testman, I'm present, thank you.
Oh, great, thank you. All right, and Commissioner Mather? Okay, and Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Excellent. All right, then our first order of business is, I believe, to allow members of the public to give comments on items of interest to them for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any members present online? We'll try to get to the meeting here. Thanks, yeah, if you've got it up. All right, I do not see any hands online and I don't see anyone here in the chamber. So that will take us to the next item, which is the, oh, I forgot the agenda, sorry. If there are no corrections to the agenda or no amendments, then we'll accept them as presented. All right, not seeing any hands. All right, so we'll go ahead and consider the agenda approved. All right, we just did public comments. We do not have any minutes or agenda bills, but we do have a discussion item, which is a housing presentation and discussion. This is going to be the draft Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Action Plan and the Middle Housing Department of Commerce. So I'll turn this over to staff to kind of emcee the presentations.
Yes, Emily Artetche, Community Development Director. Yes, tonight we have our land use consultant, Matt Covert from LDC, here to present the draft results from the Housing Needs Analysis and the Housing Action Plan. Are we able to promote him to a panelist now, Jimmy?
I'm already a panelist.
Great. Yes, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Emily, and good evening, Commissioners and Councilmembers. I'm looking forward to talking to you tonight. So I'm going to go through a slide presentation that's also in your packet. This concerns the individual Housing Needs Assessment and the Draft Housing Action Plan and just situates that in the broader context of the Housing Action Plan grant. And then we'll all lead into some discussion of some of the specific strategies that we've prepared as part of the Draft Housing Action Plan and then transition on into questions as appropriate and then into the Department of Commerce's presentation. So I will go ahead and share my screen. Okay. There we go. So Housing Action Plan. I'm going to give an overview of the project to help get everybody up to speed on what this is and how it fits in the broader housing context, what it is, what it isn't. And then I will give a look at the overall, the high-level project schedule and where this is at relative to the end of the grant program, some high-level Housing Needs Assessment findings, and then the Draft Housing Action Plan itself. I'll also note that since this is now an issued draft, not only are we taking comments with bodies like the Planning Commission and the City Council and the CD Committee, we also have this, this is also going out as a press release from the city and there's an interactive version of this online that you can actually put comments in directly in the document. So that'll be really helpful for you or for anyone else in your networks as we seek to collect feedback on the draft. So what is the HAP and where are we at in this? So this was a grant program that the state set up a couple of years ago. Another round of funding was made available last year and the city of Snoqualmie had kind of a unique approach to this. So they, Snoqualmie along with North Bend, Duval and Carnation, put in a grant for a Joint Housing Needs Assessment, which is a regional document that covers all four cities and looks at the kind of the metrics and housing data and demographic data that are needed to get a good picture of what's going on with housing in each city as well as just kind of the broader trends in the region. But then each city does its own Housing Action Plan because the planning context, the needs, the, obviously the ordinances and comp plans are all different in each city and so, and you know, sort of different cultures, different needs, different kind of imagined future states. And so each city did its own Housing Action Plan. So we were, we sort of worked a little bit with the consultants that prepared the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, but then we took that data, expanded on it into an individual document for Snoqualmie and then drafted a Housing Action Plan that takes those needs and issues that popped up in engagement and interviews that we've done as well as in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and funneled it into a set of actions and strategies that the city can consider taking to help address some of those housing issues.
I'm just going to pause you for one second. I noted that Commissioner Lambert is here so we can get him promoted. Also that Councilmember Watten is in attendance.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, keep going.
Sure, thank you. So bigger picture, the Housing Action Plan is just one of many housing initiatives in the planning world that cities, in some cases, can choose to take, in some cases have to take because of comprehensive planning to address housing issues. The Housing Action Plan is an interesting process and an interesting outcome because it is not a regulatory plan, it's not the comp plan, but it does support the comp plan. So it's a set of tools, a set of actions the city could consider taking and an implementation schedule to accomplish those things. But it also contains some action write-ups and some policy analysis that will be useful in updating the housing element of a comprehensive plan, which, as you know, is a regulatory binding plan. Snoqualmie's also working on a middle housing project. We're lucky enough to be working on that as well. Some of the ideas generated during the HAP, the Housing Action Plan, which again are more housing, just all of the housing issues kind of put together, specific to middle housing issues, we're doing some additional analysis and there's a grant program that the state put out that's funding that work that has some special requirements related to displacement and equity that have to do with housing element requirements. So this is kind of all kind of, this is all kind of leading up to helping the city address its housing element during the update of the comprehensive plan. But the Housing Action Plan itself is a research-based, engagement-based set of tools the city can consider using that also helps to address some of those comp plan issues. So it's, they're related, but this is totally different than the comp plan. We started way back in the middle of last year. There was some early outreach to staff and communities in the late summer, early fall. And then FCS Group did the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that wrapped up in, near the end of the year last year. Then over the kind of December-January timeframe, we did the Individual Housing Needs Assessment and drafted the interviews with stakeholders and drafted the Housing Action Plan in preparation for discussions like this and for broader community feedback in spring of this year. The narrowing, zooming in on that, on that end of that timeline there. So the Draft Housing Action Plan was, you know, sort of issued and invited for comment in end of last month. And then March and April was really all about getting feedback on that, making revisions. The final Housing Action Plan has to be, has to be, the City Council has to take action on it by June 30th. We're aiming to be done a little bit sooner than that because as we get into comp plan season and since we also have the middle housing program, there's a lot of housing work to do. And if we can kind of use this as a springboard to those further discussions around middle housing and then the comp plan, we feel really comfortable with that. So we did in-depth interviews with a number of members of the community. So social services providers, housing providers, senior center builders, realtors, so the folks that are called out specifically in the grant program. You know, we wanted to make sure to hit a broad spectrum there. And we've also got this project, the Housing Action Plan, up on the website and the city is doing some media outreach, press release, and obviously the public meetings to get to invite feedback on this. And we're looking forward to getting more feedback from you and from the stakeholders and their groups yet this spring so that we can really get a good final Housing Action Plan before the end of June that meets the city's needs and serves as a good springboard to the next set of the stage of the process. So what did the Housing Needs Assessment find? So this is a, this is a part of the grant program that there's specific things that we have to, that we have to look at, specific pieces of data we have to look at. And as I mentioned, we had a regional Housing Needs Assessment that, you know, got us off on a good footing with a lot of that, a lot of those data. But then we took some Snoqualmie-specific stuff and drilled down into the data a little deeper and came up with an individual Housing Needs Assessment that's going to be an appendix to the Housing Action Plan that we can also make available upon request. We can also probably get that on the website. We can talk to city staff about that. The draft HAP is up there right now, but not the Housing Needs Assessment. But really, the ultimate goal of this is to serve as one of the, like, the two major things in forming the Housing Action Plan are, what is the, what are the data telling us? And what's the community, what are the stakeholders in the housing world saying about this? And so this kind of accomplishes that first piece of that, which is the housing market demographics and housing demand. What are gaps and who has housing that's affordable to them? And what are some of the trends and potentially future, you know, future trends coming down the line that will help us better understand housing needs? So I'll just go over this fairly briefly. A lot of this, I think, will be, will be pretty common knowledge to all of you. But it's no surprise that Snoqualmie has a very high median income. It's also, of the four cities in the region, in the Housing Needs Assessment, it's, I believe it's the youngest. It's overall a very young city compared to its peers in the Snoqualmie Valley. But that is going to create some issues over the planning period. You know, as we start talking about comprehensive plan because there's a huge amount of residents of Snoqualmie who are in kind of their mid-30s to early 40s. And by the end of the planning period, those people will be approaching retirement age. And so what does housing look like for them in 15, 20 years' time? Snoqualmie is, like many cities that are pretty far afield and don't have, and are, have been changing really rapidly in the last couple of decades. It is definitely a kind of a swap from daytime to nighttime. So more than 90% of workers, who people who have jobs who live in Snoqualmie are employed outside the city. And of Snoqualmie's roughly 5,000 jobs, almost 90% are filled with workers who live outside the city. This was also echoed in the engagement work that we did about both businesses who are located in or near Snoqualmie having a tough time finding people because of the cost of housing and also the reverse, you know, the reverse situation for the people who live in Snoqualmie is that commuting pretty long distances, especially going toward the Seattle area and a little bit, and on the east side, near east side, is a fact of life. And that drives a lot of the housing issues and housing needs. This is Snoqualmie's housing production by type, going back a few decades. I think you'll notice something happens right around 2000, 2001 and that something would be Snoqualmie Ridge. Don't think this is any secret to any of you. But it is interesting to note that the two or more housing units, so that's, you know, broadly speaking, multifamily, also grows by a considerable margin over that time. So that the, you know, you've added several hundred units of multifamily housing in addition to the thousands of single-family homes. As I mentioned, Snoqualmie is a high-income community, especially by Snoqualmie Valley standards. 80% of the city's households make $100,000 or more per year. Roughly 20% of Snoqualmie households who rent make 50% or below the area median income. That's lower than most of the other cities in the valley, but it's still not nothing. You know, the city has, the city has roughly 7,000 households. So that's, you know, that's hundreds of households. So it's less than some of your peer cities, but it's still a lot of people who are going to struggle to afford, to find homes they can afford, housing they can afford in Snoqualmie. The price, the median price of homes has risen really rapidly over the last decade or so. Home value is up 34% since 2010. Obviously, with recent data coming in, you know, we're seeing a softening of those values, but we're still, you're still looking at a very expensive housing market. Rents, and I haven't seen very recent rental data yet, but interestingly, rent increases actually outpaced the single-family home values, at least by some measures. As I mentioned, some of those increases appear to have stalled out with the higher mortgage rates and inflation. Obviously, the region on the whole has a housing market that's cooling, but you're starting from such a high baseline that this is going to remain a very expensive housing market. One thing we looked at in the Housing Needs Assessment is the gap between what current demand is and what's available and affordable for households making under 80% of the median income for the area. And the current gap, meaning sort of how many people making less than 80% of the area median income have housing that's affordable to them, whatever that means for them, is roughly 350 units. And according to the best data we have to date, a little less than 1,100 units of housing are going to be needed to sort of plan for the city's future growth as part of the comp plan. So that's more than 1,400 units that the city kind of needs to account for by 2044 to ensure that everybody's got a place that's affordable and attainable for them and to accommodate the future projected plan for growth as part of the region-wide and comprehensive plan for the city. So that's a lot of households. What are we going to do about it? Well, as we know, Snoqualmie is, has some pretty interesting geographic constraints. And so part of what we looked at in the, in taking these expressions of need and turning them into things the city can do is looking at kind of what's within the city's control now and what can be done as part of the comprehensive plan and sort of navigating that, navigating that process. Snoqualmie has, you know, half the city, more than half the city is a giant master plan community and the other half is mostly constrained by the floodplain of the river. So you're in an interesting situation. We're hoping that through the HAP, the middle housing work and the comprehensive plan work, that we can identify some paths to accommodating growth, the plan for growth in a way that makes sense for Snoqualmie. Each of the action write-ups that's in the Draft Housing Action Plan, this is just a sort of an outline of how each one's laid out. So as I mentioned at the beginning, this is a, this is a set of potential tools, potential actions the city can take, kind of organized broadly by strategy, meaning the higher, the higher-end thinking behind the problem that we're trying to solve. So are we trying to, you know, make a wider variety of units more attainable? Are we trying to bring down the cost of development? Are we trying to do both? And so some of the tools and the actions that we look at are able to do multiple things, accomplish multiple big goals at once. So what are those big goals? What is specifically the action that the city could take? So describing any potential code changes, any potential, you know, comp plan changes that may have to happen, ways the city can set themselves up for success on that, pitfalls to avoid, you know, what are some of the potential downsides of doing this? And then at the end of all this, we've got a set of actions that are, that folks can agree are, you know, a set of good ideas worth considering, getting down to a little more of a specific schedule of implementation. So looking at the scale of impact for each action, the complexity of it in terms of how many, how many other jurisdictions have to buy off on this? You know, if it's, if it has to come in the comp plan, if it's within the scope of the comp plan or whether it's something that can be done sooner, just as part of, as part of code updates. So that kind of level of detail is going to come at the end as after we've, you know, vetted all these draft actions and gotten a good, a good solid set of actions and strategies. As I mentioned, part of this will be discussing how, if at all, potential action helps with the comp plan, meeting the housing element requirements or meeting growth target requirements. You know, this is not a regulatory action, the Housing Action Plan, but it does discuss, here's some things that you could do to help, help those regulatory planning efforts be more successful. So we looked at several different, you know, these are broad strategies. Some of these come from the grant requirements. Some of these are just best practices and things that the city needs to consider. So we're looking at, you know, how do particular actions help do any of the following? Incentivize new housing, bring down the cost of development, encourage a wider variety of housing types, prevent and mitigate displacement and improve the regulatory permitting environment. So each action sheet contains, you know, what is this thing that we're looking at that the city could potentially do? What would be needed in order to do this? You know, what codes would need to be changed? What would have to happen in the comp plan? Who do we have to talk to? What are the kind of the pros and cons of doing this? Special emphasis on, you know, that helping filter things for an implementation schedule and then examples of who else has done this. And we think this is really valuable because nobody likes to be, nobody likes to be on the vanguard of a lot of these things. You know, when you're talking about big changes or even small changes to your code or your plans to help accommodate more growth, it's really, it's really helpful to know whether this has worked elsewhere and how. You know, what are some pitfalls to avoid? So that's what each action write-up in the plan contains. I'm not going to go through each action because there's like a dozen of them. But I am going to outline them here under each of those big buckets of actions, you know, these strategies that help address particular issues. So these are actions that could potentially be taken to help incentivize new housing. You know, we did write-ups for different ways to enable more senior housing to be created. Looking at how temporary emergency housing and permanent supportive housing are going to need to be expanded upon and defined in the code and made to comply with recent state law. Prioritize any potential future annexations that could add residential capacity and some ideas on how to do that when that, when those opportunities arise. Recruit and partner with affordable housing specialists. So when you're talking about truly affordable housing, stuff that's cheaper than, or stuff that's affordable for people making, you know, 50% or less of the median income, that's really hard to do without subsidies, without tax credits, without income. You know, the MFTE program, that's the next action. But without something that guarantees, you know, affordability for a certain range of incomes for a certain amount of time, and if you want to do that, you have to have developers and service providers who are well acquainted with that, know how to do it and conserve that population really well. So these are a set of actions that address in some way the issue of incentivizing new housing. On the issue of bringing down the cost of development, so one of the reasons, not the only reason certainly, but one of the reasons housing is expensive to buy is that it's really expensive to build. And part of that's related to things that are outside the city's control. Part of it's related to things that the city can help nudge in a different direction. So those include things having to do with SEPA, ways to make ADUs easier or more flexible, to maybe make them a little easier to build in the city. And then again, recruiting and partnering with affordable housing specialists. On the issue of providing a wider variety of housing types, as I mentioned, Snoqualmie's actually done a pretty good job, you know, adding to the, its roster of multifamily housing over the last several decades. But yet we still saw rents going up faster even than the cost of a home, which was already pretty remarkable in and of itself. So what can we do? Well, a lot of that's going to have to come with, as I mentioned before, some comprehensive planning and potential annexation-related things because of how constrained the city is. There are potentially some ways to accommodate some additional variety of housing types within current city limits, whether that's trying to implement a couple zones that are not, either not implemented in code or in the, on the zoning map or are sort of implemented in a very limited way right now. ADUs can also help with this. More clearly defining and regulating townhomes and the development standards for townhomes can be part of this as well because, as with many communities, Snoqualmie allows townhomes, but there's just some issues with code and the way they're permitted and designed that can potentially be a barrier there. Prevent and mitigate displacement, so this is one of those things that is really important, not just for the grant program, for housing action plans, but for the middle housing program and as part of your housing element for your comprehensive plan. This is going to, this is one of the big-ticket items that the city is going to have to do some policy work on and some development regulation work to be compliant with state law. A really big one for that is going to be the MFTE program. The city is currently working on implementing that mill site, but we did some research on how that could potentially be expanded, if not citywide, you know, at least in more zones or in more areas in the city. And then lastly, some actions the city could take with regard to best practices on tenant protections. And then lastly, the last bucket here, the last strategy is improve the regulatory environment for permits. So this is largely, the main one for this for Snoqualmie is related to SEPA and we can, we can get into that on the, if anybody has questions and I can pull up the draft plan. But this is really, you know, about, not that the city doesn't get a ton of individual permits for new housing because of how master-planned and constrained it is, but when you do get new projects, you know, like the mill site, they tend to be huge. And so what are some ways the city could potentially look to help those be less complex where possible? So what's coming next here? So, you know, meetings like this, we're going to discuss with Commissioners and Councilmembers, receive and review a lot of comments hopefully in those meetings as well as on the interactive version on the web. We got to, as I mentioned, we have to get through the, get a resolution in front of the council prior to June 30th for adoption. And so we're working to get there, hopefully a little sooner than that, but we'll have more details on that as the next couple of weeks unfold. Then meanwhile, as I mentioned before, the city and LDC are working on the middle housing project, which is a different but related state grant program to look at some of those displacement issues, address racially disparate impacts, which is something that's required for the comprehensive plan and conduct a detailed land capacity analysis to really help figure out, you know, where does the city have flexibility in accommodating growth within current city limits? within current city limits and where are we really gonna have to look at? You know, building, building support for any potential future annexations or comp plan changes that could help accommodate that growth later in the planning period. So that's getting a little more detailed on that specifically on middle housing. And we're looking forward to hearing from Joe tonight on on the Commerce's work on that. Any questions from you all about the draft Housing Action Plan or or the Housing Needs Assessment that I can help answer for you tonight?
Thank you very much. All right. Questions from the committee and the commissioner. Commission, oh, by the way, I believe that Commissioner Aliff joined us.
Yeah, he's here.
Yeah. Excellent. Yeah. Okay, so questions?
Just to clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the gap of one thousand four hundred and twenty-nine units through two thousand forty-four, that was the addition of the three hundred and fifty units were currently short and one thousand seventy-nine of future growth. I I didn't get a good feel for the three fifty was the less than eighty percent. What was the one thousand seventy-nine? Was that just general growth or was that in a certain category?
That is, that's a great question. That is the difference between the housing target that's been adopted as part of the King County countywide planning policies. So that's related to the, related to the the PSRC target for the category of city that you're in. And then it got broken down by jurisdiction, county level as part of the 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 work that the the county council and the county staff did with jurisdictions, with individual jurisdictions for the countywide planning policies. It's kind of in the weeds. Basically, it takes the, it's the, the target for how many more units you're gonna have to accommodate minus the units that have been constructed in the last roughly three years since your capacity was determined through the Buildable Lands Program. So it's a, it's a kind of a complicated answer, but it's a, it's a, it's a math problem with some kind of, with some kind of arcane elements to it. But basically, it's your, your housing target, your planning target for the next twenty years minus the stuff that's been built since that target was determined with county's data. So the target was fifteen hundred. The the number built was like, was four hundred and twenty-one in the past three years. Or the number in the permitting pipeline, I should say.
And then the three fifty that you say we're currently short, that is the less than eighty percent?
Yep, that's the people making less than eighty percent of the median income who are paying too much for their housing, basically.
Okay.
Okay. Now, one of the things that you talked about was how half the city is Snoqualmie Ridge, which has a complex set of mixed-use final plan and what's it called? Development agreements, et cetera. And then the other half is heavily restricted by the floodplain. Now, my understanding and and staff can correct me if I'm wrong here, is that the area that is in the Gema Fitz floodplain or floodway, but at any rate, could have residential, new residential on it if it were not on the ground floor, but you could have commercial on the ground floor and you could have residential above that. When to allow that, what we could do is look at upzoning some of those areas that currently are not zoned as such. If I remember correct?
Yeah, that's that. Yeah, it's the, it's the flood, the floodplain, the floodway is like the, the 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 area that you really can't do a whole lot in no matter what. Whereas the the one percent floodplain is is restricted. There's building issues that you you have to build in a certain way and but it is possible to build things. One issue, you know, one issue with that is that if you're trying to, if you're trying to make housing more attainable for more people, but you also have to build it as part of a a mixed-use building with commercial on the ground, that's that's gonna drive costs up. So, you know, what are some ways to to help accommodate that? But that's, yeah, that that is, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
I was just gonna just add that in the floodplain residential uses are prohibited by state law. So the ones that are there now are grandfathered in, of course, but it it would be virtually impossible to add new in the floodway these days.
But in the floodplain, you can?
In the floodplain, you can build residential housing. It has to be elevated at a minimum. So typically, in a mixed-use development, you would see that ground floor retail with residential on top. That's perfectly acceptable as, as you heard Matt say, there's, there are certainly cost issues with with that, but and then this gets back to the, some of the other work the city's been doing about, you know, trying to get the floodway and the flood elevations adjusted through, to try to push that back a little bit to gain some more land that's outside the floodway.
Councilman Mahi, it looked like you were gonna say something.
I, I, I think he fixed it. I think he misspoke initially, just to be clear. Yeah, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Floodway, there's no residential. I'm sorry.
Flood?
Floodway, no residential floodplain. It's okay.
That. Okay.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that perhaps you could look at in the the buildable lands, though there are cost issues as as mentioned. That's just a separate issue. It just means that maybe we, we don't look at completely ignoring those areas. We could look at still developing them in the future. It just would take some extra effort. Other questions right off? And one other thing from me then was with regard to the MFTE. I believe that the city is already looking into that. Is that correct? Is that Tetchy?
Yes, that's correct. Per per our, one of our previous meetings at the Community Development Committee, we are moving forward with revisions to that section of the municipal code to come back to. And in addition to that, it's anticipated that the Planning Commission will have the opportunity, like it was presented by Matt Covert, to take a look at more of a geographic area and possibly assign more opportunities for that tax exemption, should property owners want to come forward and build something to meet those.
Yeah, that could be, that, for example, that could be if if some of the lesser utilized zoning, zoning designations like R three or planned residential were used for certain areas, that could be a way of, of helping close the gap between the additional cost that gets that gets, you know, created through floodplain mitigation. That's, that's one potential tool to help do that.
I did want to mention also on the idea of SEPA exemptions that yeah, I'd be interested to see more about what kinds of exemptions we would be allowed to do under state law and what those could look like. You know, I do get concerned if we are limiting environmental regulations in review and that sort of thing. Because we have such a beautiful area, I wouldn't want to be limiting that too much. But, you know, that doesn't mean that there aren't some regulations every once in a while that go farther than they needed to or or that there are redundancies that don't need to be there that we can limit. I'd just be curious to see more about what specifically we could do and and what the intent is. But I do get a little skittish about limiting environmental reviews.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, there there's, there's some work in the in the Draft Housing Action Plan. I encourage you to to read that section of it and and see what you think. The other, the legislature has made it and the ecology have made it have 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 added kind of different avenues and and ways to exempt certain, certain, you know, levels of development or within certain geographic areas. If the, if the impacts have been studied through an EIS, for example, so there's some stuff that's been opened up by the legislature over the years with recognition that municipal municipal code, like the, your critical areas regulations are in general really good because they they've been made to be by state law over the, over the, over the decades. So, yeah, definitely encourage you to take a look at that. It's, it's definitely not, the focus isn't on anything that would lessen environmental protections. It's like you said, it's finding places where especially for smaller projects where the SEPA review is is not adding anything. And if it's mitigated adequately in code and and, you know, if you're just, if if half, if ninety percent of your SEPA determinations are, you know, provide mitigation as in code, does we, do we really need to be doing that? Stuff like that. Places where it's, places where it's duplicative rather than adds value.
Right. Councilman Mahi.
Yes, I'm, I'm just wondering, Mr. Cover, if you could just comment, just because you brought up MFT is a a path, which it absolutely is. In a city like ours, which is very heavily dependent on property taxes, far more than most cities for funding services. Just any thoughts you have broadly about how communities deal with the sort of apparent sort of squeeze there, which is, yeah, we can do more MFT, which helps with getting more housing and addressing the need as you kind of outlined, but at the same time, doesn't provide much additional revenue to pay for all the services that are then gonna need to be provided. Any thoughts on kind of? And I know I probably just asked a very complex question. I know how complex it is, but any sort of high-level response you have to that, that squeeze?
Yeah, I guess I, it is a fantastic question. In many ways, that's kind of, that's kind of the fundamental question of all this is, is those trade-offs. And, you know, one way that the, that the the state, the state program lets you have some flexibility there is like the different, you can set, you know, the different levels of what gets the eight percent exemption, what gets the twelve percent exemption. There's always trade-offs, right? Because you can, you can limit the area to which this applies and or the amount of credit available through the eight percent, twelve percent differential. The the downside being that if you, you know, if you, if you only do the eight percent because of concerns about property tax revenue, you're probably not going to get many truly affordable units. Because the twelve percent is where you get the, the, the most bang for your buck with regard to preserving affordability for a certain length of time. And so there's a trade-off there and and I'm not gonna, not gonna pretend there aren't like serious trade-offs to this. But there are also there's also issues with, you know, that come up with regard, regard to like impact fees and such, which most units, you know, are still gonna have to pay impact fees, you know, traffic impact fees, school impact fees. However, there is also a lot of interest and we didn't get into this so much in in the Housing Action Plan. Precisely because of some of those concerns that you brought up, but some people like to say, well, can't we exempt different types of development from having to pay impact fees? And it's like, well, you know, if there is an impact, it's and with, if if it's already getting the the tax credit for the multifamily tax exemption program, it's kind of hard to argue that we can also exempt them from impact fees just from a provision of services standpoint. And so those are kind of the where those tool, where the rubber meets the road with some of these tools. And sometimes there is a trade-off and you have to, you have to figure out. Okay, you know, if is, do we need to have less area, more focused on affordability? So maybe you have a smaller area that it applies, but more emphasis on the twelve percent credit? Or are we more concerned with just providing more market rate units and helping ease price pressure? Then maybe you use the eight percent credit and apply it to a slightly wider area. So that would be kind of my, like, you know, off-the-cuff answer there. But you're right, it is, there are serious trade-offs here and and there's some tools that, like the impact fee thing and the MFTE thing, that it's hard to argue using those two tools for the same type of housing and have that not seriously eat into the ability to provide services. So, yeah, great question.
Any other questions?
And I'll just, I'll just add before, before we move on that I did check the website. The, the city helped stand up on this and the Housing Needs Assessment is also up there. So the, the Draft Housing Action Plan and the Individual Housing Needs Assessment for Snoqualmie are on the there's a, there was a press release put out on the the HAP on February twenty-first. And I can, if I'm, since I'm a panelist, I think I can drop that link in the chat. If not in the chat, I can, we can maybe include that. I can have, ask staff to include that in the next packet. Doesn't appear that chat's available here, so. But I encourage you to to check that out and and maybe Emily and Jason, the next packet that goes out, we can have the memo or something that's got those links in there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is our next speaker Joe Tovar, is that correct?
Correct.
I think we need to promote them.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
So if you look at the website, it's right on the front page for the Housing Action Plan. Where you can actually give comment.
Community Development Director Artetia, if you could just introduce our next speaker.
Yeah, Joe Tovar, if you recall, was one of our presenters in our short course for local planning that we held late last fall. And the city recently was awarded a large amount of money to do middle housing analysis and research. Joe is here to explain a little bit more about the program. We did contract with LDC and you heard from Matt Covert that he is going to be moving forward after the Housing Needs Analysis and Action Plan is done with the analysis on middle housing and the Buildable Lands Report. So I'm very pleased to present Joe Tovar to provide you an overview of what that work will entail.
Thank you. So can you all see me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Emily, would you mind pulling up the PowerPoint for me and advance it at your end? Again, Joe Tovar with the Washington State Department of Commerce. Thank you for having me. Emily asked me to speak to to you tonight a bit about not the details of the Growth Management Act, but really amendments that were made to the act just a couple of sessions ago that bear on the question of housing, the housing element. So the requirements that that Matt and LDC are helping you with, update your comprehensive plan and development regulations are in some part responding to the changes that were made to the, to the GMA two sessions ago by House Bill twelve twenty. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about what those changes were, what that might mean for your efforts to update your plan and your regulations. And then talk a little bit about middle housing, the middle housing grant, what it is, where we are with that work and the kind of support that Commerce can provide to the city on different pieces of the work you'll be doing over the next eighteen months or so. So if you can pull that up for me at your end. We could get underway here. Or Emily, if you can enable me to be a co-host, I can pull it up at this end.
Do you have it there? Okay, thank you, Jason.
There we go. Well, again, this is the topic. This is the subject of what I'm gonna be talking about tonight, your periodic update. What the GMA has said about changes to the housing element requirements and middle housing, the grant program you're participating in right now. Next slide. Growth Management Act was amended to require plans and regulations of cities and counties to be updated on a ten-year cycle. Four counties here in this region, including King County, are required to complete their update to their plan and their regulations by December of two thousand twenty-four. So you have the better part of a year and a half, almost a year and a half to finish the work you're engaged in right now. Next slide. So I mentioned House Bill twelve twenty. It was a pass by the legislature two sessions ago. The language I'm showing you here has now been codified into the Growth Management Act. So you don't need to go back and look at the House Bill. It's it's in the GMA right now, but what I wanted to pop out for you here is that one of the things that the bill did was to change the Growth Management Act housing goal. The housing goal has read pretty much the same since it was adopted first nineteen ninety. And you can see here the changes that were made to the housing goal with strike-through and underlining. So you can see the word encourage has been stricken. And instead, the verb or the words affordable that plan and accommodate for affordable, housing affordable to all economic segments. Then the significant here, because although this is a goal and not a requirement, goals are used to guide your actions as you update your plans and codes. So here, the legislature, I think, was saying, we're not gonna use the passive verb, encourage. We're gonna use a more active verb, plan for and accommodate. So I think it's just a a matter of tone or of added emphasis. I think the legislature was trying to communicate by changing the goal as you see it here. Next slide. So the bill made a number of other changes to what's required to be So the bill made a number of other changes to what's required to be in your housing element. Again, some of these things are going to be repeating things that Matt told you earlier this evening or at other meetings in the past are coming up about what you must now do with your housing element that is different than before two seasons ago. So you must identify sufficient capacity for the land identified housing needs, including the number of units and types that will provide, the Commerce Agency will provide to local governments. So you need to identify sufficient land capacity within the U G A, which the city is here within an urban growth area. You must also provide for moderate density housing options. And it's specifically names townhouses, duplexes and triplexes. Now, 1220 did not use the term middle housing, but all the discussion that's taken place since then lists middle housing as including townhomes, duplexes and triplexes. So the work that we'll talk about a little bit later includes those three forms of housing. Those are types of housing you already have a duty under the G M A to look at as part of your plan update. There's legislation going on right now. I'm sure you're all aware of it. There's quite a bit of legislation going on right now under discussion in Olympia that touches on many of these things. So we're not going to talk about what is that legislation going to require, because it's not legislation that's been adopted yet. So here I'm focusing just on what is the law already say and what you're already required to think about as you update your comprehensive plan. You're supposed to be making adequate provisions for housing needs for all economic segments. So this is new for low, very low, extremely low and moderate income households, housing locations in relation to employment locations and the role of accessory dwelling units in meeting some housing needs. Next slide. Matt made reference to disparate impacts, displacement, inclusion and exclusion. The the G M A has now said, when you do your comprehensive plan, you were to look for local policies and regulations, including zoning, disinvestment and infrastructure availability that could result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion in housing. The next bullet here is an interesting one, because it says, once you've identified those things, you must begin to undo these impacts through policies and regulations. So this is going to be a very interesting and important task. Undo is the only time in the entire G M A where the word undo has been used. So it's actually creating a duty. It's saying, once you figure out what these impacts are, what contributes to this disparate impact, you need to figure out how you're going to try to undo that. You also are to identify areas at higher risk of displacement and establish anti-displacement policies. And the good news is Commerce is already working with local governments, provide guidance on how do you do these different things to give you some thoughts about ways you could identify disparate impacts, ways you might think about beginning to undo those impacts, ways you might be able to accommodate or create room for those different income bands in the housing capacity that you're building into your comprehensive plan. Next slide. Multi-county and county planning policies are also providing guidance to local, city and county comprehensive plans. Pushtown Regional Council adopts regional policy plans. And here you see these bullets, in effect, kind of repeat much of the language I just cited to you out of the G M A, what 1220 added to the housing element piece. It's interesting, the second bullet under the P S R C policy excerpts, it's the idea of promoting homeownership opportunities for these low income bands, for families and individuals, while recognizing that there have been historic inequities in the ability to have access to homeownership in the region. The King County County Planning Policies are listed here, three of these are, again, repeating some of the same kind of thinking. That first bullet, again, makes mention of duplex, triplex and townhomes. Because again, the G M A now says those are things you should be thinking about. So some of this is kind of repeating, overlapping some of the direction that's already in the G M A that we've we've highlighted so far. Idea of increasing housing choices for everyone and expanding the region supply of housing types. Types meaning attached, detached, low rise, mid-rise, high-rise. So types is something that the county planning policies are inviting cities to think about.
Something that I I have noticed seems to be frequently missing from these is a category of housing between townhomes and apartments, apartments typically being something that's rented. Although in other parts of the country, it's used differently, that's generally what it means over here, is condos, which is essentially like an apartment building, but instead people actually own the unit that they're living in. And that can be a really important step toward ownership of a larger unit, which could be a townhome or it could be a single family home down the road. So I'm just wondering, is there any particular reason that I'm not seeing much language around condos?
Well, I think the focus here has been on what is the form? Is it attached, is it detached, is it low rise, mid-rise, high-rise? The ownership versus rental question isn't really something that we're presuming will happen uniformly. So there may be four plexes that are built that are rental. There may be four plexes that are built that are owner occupied. I'm zooming you tonight from a four unit owner occupied condominium in Edmonds. So when we talk about apartments, there's, I think, a general understanding in this culture that apartments means rental. Well, the U S Postal Service calls this condominium an apartment. So if you send me a piece of mail, it's to apartment 202. But it's a homeowner, it's a homeowner occupied unit. So generally speaking, we don't use, we try to stay away from the term apartments because it tends to carry with it the implication that that's only rental housing that we're talking about. We're really trying to create opportunity for both rental and homeownership, regardless of the form or the density. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. So I'd wonder, you know, if we were to allow a large apartment complex to be built. And by that, I mean that the intent is for for it to be rental units. I would wonder, could we require that some proportion of those units be of the same form as those that are intended to be rented, but that they could be purchased as as condo units?
Well, the way of segregating ownership, whether it's a unit in a building or a structure sitting on its own parcel, there are different mechanisms under state law to segregate those units to make them available for purchase. I think one of the things that we have heard people talk about with middle housing has been, is it possible to create an opportunity for someone to to segregate the ownership parcels of, let's say, if you have four units in a building, to create those as four ownership opportunities? Well, there are a couple of ways to do that. One would be classic condominium segregation, horizontal regimes laws. Other one would be to segregate the parcels with a short plat of some kind underneath the building where someone would own then the unit and then the dirt underneath the unit, potentially in front of it and back of the unit as well. So there are different ways to segregate ownership. I think you can talk about those kinds of things in your comprehensive plan, if there are ways you can encourage that or support that, there may be a need to have more flexibility in your subdivision ordinance. I don't know your subdivision ordinance, you know, if it lends itself to making it easy to segregate parcels through a short plat in a form, let's say that would would be a middle housing form. But ownership is something that I think folks like to see. I think that's important to people. But again, the overall approach, I think, of these amendments has been to say, we need both.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide, I think. This is just some data. What what are the housing household income bands in King County? Here you see that the numbers listed for the different income bands. Overall conclusion is we need to have more and different types of housing. And this is an important bullet, number two. Housing for people with incomes below the 50% A M I may only be possible subsidies, either from governments or from nonprofits. In the past, a question has been asked of us, well, does this mean, does accommodate mean we have to build it as a city? The answer is no. Your role is not to build the housing, your role is to manage with your plans, your regulations, your capital budgets, potentially your tax policies to allow or encourage that, not necessarily to build it. So you're not on the hook to build the numbers that are given to you by the county or the state. It's your job to figure out what can we do with our plans, with our regulations, with our capital budgets, perhaps with our tax policies to encourage that to happen, to remove barriers to that happening. So that's the kind of duty that I think we want to define as what local government is responsible for. Again, some types of market rate housing may be able to serve some of those income bands at the moderate and higher income levels, so they're really not needing a subsidy if they can afford the market rate housing that's provided. It's part of the task we're doing with the middle housing study we're doing and the work we're doing with the 30 cities in in the region here is to look at what kinds of types of middle housing might pencil. Is it duplex, is it fourplex, is it townhouses, is it cottage housing? It depends on a lot of factors that our consultants are looking at and will be sharing that information with Snoqualmie and with our other grantee cities in the coming months to help you get an idea of what niches in the market might be appropriate for you to think about encouraging, what might the market respond to? And where will, where will you really need to be talking about some kind of subsidy? Which is a whole other subject of where will that subsidy come from? There's been a lot of discussion, potentially there are federal programs. The governor's budget includes a proposal for, I believe it's $4 billion of 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 funding to help support housing. The details of that, I think, have not really been made clear or discussed. And again, my understanding is that that proposal would require a vote of the people of the state in order to be able to create the legal authority for the state to issue bonds to have the $4 billion of of funds to make those subsidies. So we're not saying middle housing is affordable to everybody. There's some forms of it that could be, but some of the forms would require some kind of subsidy. And the same thing would be true of any other form of housing for people at those lower income brackets. Next slide. Well, again, we were directed to prepare some projected housing needs for all the counties of the state. We provided those numbers to the county, and I know the county has had discussion with Snoqualmie and the other cities to talk about how would you allocate the targets for these different income bands? Next slide, I think, is a more detailed presentation that actually was given to me by your staff. Next slide is the breakdown for Snoqualmie in terms of total, the permanent supportive housing targets. And then these income bands you see, 30 to 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 100 and 100 to 121% broken down as a number of of units that would be your targets to accommodate. By that, I mean encourage, remove barriers to understanding that the market will be responsible for some of this and subsidy will be necessary for some of this to actually be built. So again, I think you've heard a number of discussions of this previously by staff, potentially by L D C. You'll be hearing more about that, I'm sure, as you work your way through the plan update. So these are needs you need to respond to, even if the legislation that's being proposed this session doesn't happen. You already have these allocations, these targets, you already have this duty from 1220 from two sessions ago. So this is part of which is in your work program for the next year or so. Next slide. Now focusing on middle housing, as I mentioned, Snoqualmie is one of 30 cities in the region that have agreed to consider middle housing as a component of their plans and regulations. So the commitment that you made when you accepted grant funds was to look at this, to explore this, work with Commerce, we're working with Optico's Design as well as Cascadia Partners, who are economic real estate's firm, helping us try to look at what are the opportunities for different forms, duplex, triplex, fourplex, so on, that might make sense for you to include in your plans, in your regulations. The grant funding does not oblige you to do that. It does not oblige you to adopt plan policies or regulations that name middle housing as something you're going to include in your plan. Grant funding simply says you agree to look at it, you agree to evaluate it and work with Commerce on looking at what might it be? What might it mean? Does it have some appeal to you? And if it does, it's something you could include in your plan update, any regulations.
Yeah, could you go back to slide nine for just one second?
Sure.
I just wanted to highlight and correct me if I'm wrong. When we did the panorama apartments, that was middle housing. So that was in that quantity of 77, it would have checkbarked and everything to the left of that, which is pretty significant number, at least the 467 plus 282. So well over 700 would have ended a lower affordability than panorama. Is that accurate?
Mr. Rogers?
In short, yes.
Okay, okay. So when we attempted to do affordable housing, the best we got was where that 77 is. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to highlight that.
They're saying we need additional 77.
No, I'm saying that was the category. So we added roughly whatever it was, 80 or 90 with panorama, but its affordability was in the 50 to 80. So if we wanted to do something that had to be of much more affordability than what we did in the past with panorama, do a significant quantity.
Yeah, to meet to meet the lower A M I's.
Yes.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, they're larger numbers.
That's what I'm making.
Yes, and here's what's interesting. That's not what the city did. The city's requirement was higher than that. That that was where that ended up solely because when they went to build that, they got HUD funding, which required a lower A M I level. So had they done, had they just gone with what we, the city did, it wouldn't even have been that category. It would have been to the right of that. So I'm just amplifying your point. I agree with your point completely, but would just amplify it that now, to be fair, that that requirement came from quite a long time ago in the city. But as we look forward, I think, not only your point, but actually moving from where we have done things as a city and moving to not only what we just, what actually happened there, but even further left is even the greater challenge for us, right?
Yeah, that was my point, exactly.
So on that, some of the ways that that cities have grown in the past has been that you have some land on the edge of town where you can do some additional construction. And one of my concerns is that we end up with, at one end of town, we have some giant apartment complex that meets the needs of the lowest income brackets that are on this table here. And I'm hoping that we can find ways to avoid that, especially when we look at the U G A where we have the most potential for development, having higher density core that is more walkable than what we have traditionally done in this city. And that also allows for a variety of income ranges dispersed throughout such a development. And what that essentially avoids is ending up with some part of town where everyone kind of knows, oh, that's the low income apartment tower over there. That's something that I want to avoid as much as we can moving forward. So essentially, what what I'm saying is that I I don't want to use the edges of town to put some high density residential units. I want us to find ways we can incorporate that better throughout the city. In the U G A, again, there's the opportunity for having perhaps a higher density core there. And there's some redevelopment opportunities as we look into the future for other parts of the town that could allow for some higher density in development than what is currently there. That would require us updating some of our potentially zoning and other parts of the code. But those are all things that I want the Planning Commission to look at as we go into the comprehensive plan update. Is, you know, what are those areas where we could achieve those goals? Rather than doing something where we're building outward and trying to just fix problems at the edge of town that were created in the past for various reasons. Now, one other thing I wanted to go to, if we could go to the, I think it's the next slide. This is the one that has the, oh, yeah, that's right, you're you're running the the ship. This is the one that has what I believe, stop me correcting on the term. I believe that Strong Towns, the organization calls this transect planning or something like that, or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, transect planning. And what it feels to me like is that historically, what the city of Snoqualmie did was aim for the scale of, not necessarily residential, but including commercial, but aim for the scale of somewheres around the townhouse to multiplex size. And then fairly quickly, in terms of geographic distance from there, dropped down to single family detached homes. And there's just this whole swath of possible housing sizes and densities that are in that range that I think that we're missing in our town. And perhaps in this upcoming update to the comprehensive plan, we can look at trying to incorporate some more of those options. And that kind of gets you at those different cost ranges as well, I think. And then perhaps there are some scales that are a little bit to the right that we missed that perhaps we could look at incorporating as well. Down the road, 10 years, 20 years worth of redevelopment that we could head toward getting a little bit higher density than what we currently have. I think that we can do that. And then also in the U G A, perhaps at some of those scales, a little bit to the right of of where I feel like the median of of our city has been, at least in terms of the more dense cores. Let's see, there's something else I was going to say. Oh, well, he'll come back to me.
Anything I'd like to say about this graphic is this is one of the most used graphics around the country when people talk about middle housing or missing middle housing. This is something that was, you see the logo down there in the corner, Optico's, created by Optico's Design. One of my concerns about this graphic, and we're One of my concerns about this graphic, and we're trying to find alternatives to this graphic to make make the points we're trying to make, this seems to suggest that you have a zone of your city where it's nothing but middle housing. And then there's a zoning your city that's nothing but detached housing. Well, in fact, there may be pieces, blocks that are, or one or the other over time, but part of what the middle housing approach is to say, can we create middle housing types, duplex, fourplex, cottage housing, that is the same scale and look as a detached house and have a mix in the neighborhoods, but has both detached and some middle attached housing. So this seems to suggest the only place we would have middle housing is places where there would be other middle housing types. That may be part of the way it shakes out, but that's not really what's a predicate or essential to the idea of thinking about middle housing as a part of a mix of housing types in a community. So the question is, at the bottom here, well, why do we sometimes call this missing middle? And the answer to that is that at one time in this country, we had a lot of mixed neighborhoods that had detached house, duplex, detached house, detached house, fourplex was very common before World War Two. Soon after World War Two, the detached house became the 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 gold bar, the world standard. Lots of suburban cities were built with areas of just detached housing, and many zoning codes were adopted to prohibit anything in most residential neighborhoods other than a detached house. So it's become less and less of something that we've seen over the past several decades, but it was quite common before World War Two. I think the next slide also is helpful in making this point here in this region, in this county. We jump past the next slide and then come back to this one. Emily, because I think what I'm looking for is this. Why is it middle? Why is it missing? Well, here you can see the permit activity. This is Peta Sound Regional Council data, building permit data from twenty eleven to twenty eighteen that shows how many permits were issued for single family, which is the first column there. How many were issued for multifamily or attached, one or two, three or four, five or nine, ten to nineteen? That blue highlighted area is what we would just consider to be missing middle. It's it's middle housing. It's not detached. It's attached of some kind, but it's generally low rise as opposed to a five or a six story or taller apartment or condominium. So when you look at the the blue stuff here in the middle, you see it's a smaller percentage most years of what's been built on either detached housing or high density multifamily. And just looking at twenty eighteen, you can see that fourteen percent of the units building permits were for for detached housing. Thirteen percent were for what we're considering or categorizing as middle housing, and seventy-three percent were for medium height and taller and denser multifamily. So most of what's been built hasn't been middle housing over the past decade. Yeah, but we can jump back to the previous slide now. But this is why we sometimes refer to it as missing. It's because it's a relatively small number compared to other forms that have been built recently.
But I'd be willing to bet that if we were to look at the same the same table, but for, say, nineteen fifty to two thousand, I bet that that a single family percentage was significantly larger.
Much larger, much larger. Part of what's happening here in this region is the urban growth area is constraining where people can build, right? And as a lot of land has been consumed, detached housing, whether it's like a seven thousand or an eight thousand or ten thousand square foot lot, consumes a fair amount of land. So there really is not a lot of additional land available inside the group of growth area to build more detached houses. So that's why that number has been declining and will continue to decline for the foreseeable future, not to say people can't build it, not to say it won't be built, but it will be very expensive housing. Right now, the average, I think, is over a million dollars, most of the east side for a detached house. Can we go back to the previous slide now? There we go. This was a little bit of a discussion of, well, what is middle housing? What? What's the common concept here that distinguishes it from other kinds of housing? Middle housing is house scale about the size of a house. It's attached or stacked or clustered. So that means duplex common wall, that's an attached unit. Duplex or fourplex up and down, that's a stacked unit. I'm in a stacked unit right here in Edmonds. I'm on the second floor of a fourplex. So this is a stacked unit. Or cluster is basically cottage housing, where you might have a group of small houses, might be eight hundred thousand square foot of floor area, but detached one from the other. So they're they're freestanding with their clustered around a common green area. So that's the overall thought. It's house scale. It's attached actor clustered. And approval or denial is typically based on locally adopted objective design standards, again, to mirror the form, scale, and character of detached houses. Middle housing is something that has been implemented in many cities in Oregon and in California and other parts of the country. In those places, what they've done is to say we want to make it fit into a neighborhood that has primarily detached houses. We need to pay attention to scale, the height, the width, the depth. You could stop there and say, that's all we want to regulate. If you want to, you could go beyond that, talk about roof pitch. You could talk about placement of doors and windows and access. So there's lots of things in the regulations you could do if you wish to 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 move further in the direction of making sure it fits in with what people think of as a detached house. And the bottom bullet here is basically trying to convey when you have very detailed objective standards, but there's not a lot of room to interpret. I mean, it's in the code. It's this dimension. It's this shape. It's this orientation. It's almost like a building code. Empirical standard that the administrator then knows, here's what I can or can't issue in the way of a permit. So we're having very, you might even call them prescriptive standards to increase predictability. So the person who's going to be administering the permit, the applicant, and people next to the project all know, what can this look like? How big can it be? How can it be shaped? What will the rules be even before the application is made for the permit? So this is a very different approach than, let's say, design review boards, where you might have a hearing. You might have six or seven. I don't know if you have a designer view board in Snoqualmie. A lot of cities have a designer view board. And as I interview, then applies guidelines to projects that come before them at a hearing. The guidelines are more subjective, require some interpretation. Standards that we talk about for middle housing are more prescriptive, more empirical, more hard and fast. So there's no really room for the administrator to make a judgment about what's been applied for, because by the time the person applies for the permit, the standards have told him or her what you can do and what you can't do. So that's that's the concept we've been talking about with the middle housing work we're doing with Optico's, with our grantee cities. We're saying, if you wanted to do this in your regulations, you could have an awful lot of discretion about how detailed you will get. If you want to have a hearing on on a middle housing project experienced in Oregon and California has been, that will make it unrealistic that it would work, wouldn't be viable. So the the preference in Oregon and California has been, and that we think makes sense, be as detailed as you need to be to make sure it will fit into the neighborhood. But then make it an administrative process rather than a hearing process.
One of the things that sometimes there there are some people who bristle at the idea of duplexes and triplexes because they have an image in their mind of a rather rundown part of town that has to do with some historical things that happened with urban areas in the country. There are all kinds of historical reasons why some duplexes and triplexes have that stereotype attached to them. But by no means does that have to be the way that these kinds of buildings are built. If you want a good example of some duplexes that that look very high end, look no further than our neighboring city of Issaquah, there's this kind of a donut looking street that's up by Blakely Hall up in the Highlands. And those those homes share a wall, and they look like the fanciest kinds of single family homes you can imagine. But they share a wall, and it saves space. It raises the value tremendously of the land that those units are sitting on, because you now have two families sitting there. It also raises the potential for property taxes for the city, which kind of in a strange way, it actually decreases how much the average family would pay because they are paying for a smaller unit on the lot, but the lot is worth more. So it's kind of an interesting thing there. But anyway, I just with some of these pictures, some of them at a first glance kind of looked a little bit more like a stereotype of some of the duplexes that some people might imagine in their heads. Well, they could certainly have a much more updated aesthetic than some of the ones we see here.
It turns out what I've used here is a slide that I use with the people up in the city of Stahomish. So all five of these images are from the city of Stahomish. And I agree, this is not, these are not new. These are our older buildings, but they like them in Stahomish. They think they have a lot of character. So this is why I use the slide. I probably should have replaced it. We have a gallery, we already put together of other forms, duplex, triplex, fourplex, that are much more modern, like the ones I think you mentioned in Issaquah. We also have a gallery that includes images from Walla Walla, Spokane, Wenatchee, Kirkland, with much more modern looking middle housing types that I think wouldn't get the kind of reaction I think you'd be concerned about, perhaps, with people looking at some of these older forms from Stahomish. So that's something I'll be sharing with Emily and with the other grantee cities. We're working with that on that with Optico's. Right now, we've got a pretty extensive library of duplex, triplex, fourplex from around Washington primarily. We're trying to limit the examples to this state so that people know that this is not just some idea from the east coast or California or Canada. It's something that you will find in Walla Walla. You'll find it in Pasco. You'll find it in Spokane. Next slide. Okay, we've seen this slide. Another thing I wanted to briefly touch on is that there was a survey, a public opinion survey done last fall jointly by Peta Sound Regional Council and the Washington State Department of Commerce to ask people questions about housing. Next slide. Here you can see that people were asked, this is a scientific survey, telephone survey with some follow up about what are your priorities? What are the most pressing issues that the state of Washington should be paying attention to? And the top two issues were housing costs and homelessness. The top two issues. Now, I I mentioned them to me in the top two because in the past, they were priorities, but they weren't the top two issues. The top two issues in the past were things like taxes, traffic, crime, education, the environment. So I'm not saying those things don't matter, but it's it's interesting that now these two have risen to the very top of what people say are things that the state should be paying the most attention to. A lot of the the numbers you see here are statewide numbers. We also broken it down by regions, and I'll show you some regional numbers here. Basically, the overall theme here is everybody is confirming what many of us know. Rents are too high, housing costs too much. We need more reasonably priced housing in all our communities. And most people prefer things like walkable neighborhoods. We need more housing for a new emerging demographic, more seniors, more people who are single person had a household, households without children. Increasing number of households without children over time is kind of startling. The the idea that every ha- every household had to have a backyard because you're going to have two children. If people want that backyard, if they have two children, that is an opportunity, but that's going to be an expensive opportunity for people. A lot of folks don't have two children. A lot of people don't need a backyard. A lot of people would prefer to have something like a cottage or a unit in duplex that's in a walkable neighborhood. Access to transit potentially, or access to shops, access to to work potentially. So these are different demographics that we were dealing with twenty years ago, and the needs that are emerging are largely people saying we need more choice. We need more opportunities. We need different types of housing. Next slide. Now, here we break it down into the different regions of the state. You see Peta Sound right there, highlighted red. The question is the communities need more diverse and affordable housing types such as duplex cottage, courtyard apartments, townhouses, and mixed developments. Two thirds of the people interviewed in this region said, yes, they agreed with that. And again, you see the the gradations going left to right. When I say two thirds, that's the two blue segments there. The next question about multifamily housing like triplexes should be allowed in single family zones where all standards of the zone are met, such as height, setback, and parking. The answer there was about fifty-eight percent in this region agreeing with that statement. So again, a key piece of this question is the standards would have to be complied with. So not just anything goes for a duplex or a triplex, but rather we need standards that will be comparable to those of single family houses, such as the height of the building, the setbacks of the buildings, and parking requirements for buildings. Next slide. People also wanted government to do more. Eighty-three percent of them said the government agency should work together to address the need for housing. The state working with the county, working with the city, working with regional governments like PSRC, working with special districts. They've got a role in all this, too. Sixty-four percent of the people interviewed said the government agency should do more to provide housing that is not being delivered by the market. That's a roundabout way of saying subsidy. There's going to need to be a subsidy for some of these housing needs the market just can't respond to. Now, what form that takes, how much money that is, how much does it get manifested as a a burden on existing taxpayers? Those are important questions. But here, at a visceral level, people were saying off the top of their head, yeah, the market's not going to do everything. We need to figure out how the government can help provide product. That could be underwriting infrastructure costs. That could be direct subsidy. It could be a lot of things yet to be discussed, yet to be decided upon, but a lot of discussion coming in the future on that on that topic. Next slide. So there's assistance available from our agency. We have a website. We have a number of pieces of guidance that we're already working on. We're having webinars with local government people on accessory dwelling units guidance, on the land capacity piece that Matt made mention of earlier, guidance about how to reduce disparate impacts, guidance on how to plan for those income brackets. And then finally, the blue piece here is the middle housing toolkit that we're working on with Optico's that will include a menu of standards you could consider. That whole library of duplex, triplex, fourplex, other forms from around the state that you could look at as something to help you think about. Might we want to have these forms? Might we want to adopt regulations that would only, not only enable them, but actually control them to make sure that they fit? I think the next slide is my final slide. Yes, these are online resources. We've got quite a bit on our webpage. You see here, you can surf off to any of these and see what these programs look like, what the guidance might be. And again, I'm not the only person at Commerce working on these things. So if you have a question about any of this, you can contact me. And if I can't field a question, I could put you in touch with the agency person working on that particular issue for you. I think that's all I have to say by way of my introduction. I'll field questions and be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. So questions from the committee and the commission? Seeing any hands in the chamber or online. I did have one more here. And that was really more, I think, for staff than anything, is in the discussion of the risk of dis- risk of displacement mitigation, what I'm wondering is, have we looked at and are we looking at the history of displacement in Snoqualmie? Where has it happened? In what timeframes? And what, if anything, do we need to do to address that history? It could be that the people who were displaced are long gone, who knows who they were, but we know that, say, there was a neighborhood that was displaced by a development and that there was some unjust nature to it. They got messed over effectively. You know, what kind of 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 folks, what kind of demographics were displaced in that event if it occurred? And what can we do to try to to get that demographic back, if that's making sense? Yeah, Mr. Rogers.
We're definitely looking at it. It is, I guess, complicated might be the right word here in that so much of what has changed with housing over the history of this town relates to changes that occurred at the mill. So a- as you're probably all aware, the the town of Snoqualmie Falls across the river was a large company town. And then after World War Two, Warehouser decided they no longer wanted to have company town. And so all the house government, you know, the law houses moved to the Williams addition, but they shut a lot of that down. So that displacement occurred, but it's not but it, first of all, it occurred seventy years ago now. And second, what we could do to, if you will, undo that is there's not much we could do to undo that, for example. So and that's just one thing. Snoqualmie Ridge was largely a a greenfield, a so-called greenfield development. There wasn't anybody living there to displace. So 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 that I think that's the initial answer is a lot of the things that have occurred with for our two, if you will, displacement, aren't things that we're in a position to do anything about at this point, even if we wanted to. There are certain, you know, looking further back in history, there are additional potential displacement issues we could look at. Those are conversations that we have, you know, we have had conversations with the Snoqualmie tribe already at a preliminary level talking about, you know, because the tribe obviously has occupied these lands for many thousands of years in in one way or another, and certainly you know, people moving into the valley, white people moving into the valley gave a certain amount of displacement to the the gave a certain amount of displacement to the, the native people who have resided here and, and done their activities here. Along with the tribal coordination requirements that are also new to the Growth Management Act and this conference of plan cycle, that's something that we're going to have a discussion with the tribe about and maybe there's something to address there, maybe there's not, but uh, it's, it's hard to say at this point. So all that to say, we're certainly well aware of it and we are looking into it. But right now, we haven't identified anything we could really do uh, for now.
Yeah, thank you. And I suppose that then it would become a question moving forward about the UGA that that is a populated area and just making sure that we can avoid mistakes the past. Uh, whether they were done here or in other places. Uh, and I know that uh, we're, we're well aware of those things perhaps more than uh, some of our ancestors were um, when those kinds of events occurred in the past. Um, yeah. So it's just something to, to keep in mind as we move forward with development and um, yeah. And I think it's even by, by law now that we have to worry about it, right? To some degree.
Yeah, yes we do. Uh, uh, yeah. You, you saw in the presentations, it's, it's something we need to look back retrospectively, but also we need to consider um, going forward.
I might add that the guidance that uh, the Commerce is providing local governments on this topic is largely asking questions for you to ponder. I mean, we don't know your communities. We don't know your history. You do. So I think a large part of what we're providing are things for you to think about, questions for you to ponder uh, as you try to determine for yourselves. What are the histories? What are the things that are issues that you might want to address and talk about in your, in your comprehensive plan and other actions that will be taken in the future?
Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions right off. Uh, so that does take us to the end of our agenda. Uh, thank you to our uh, presenters. And if there are no objections, we will adjourn.
Wait a minute.
Oh, okay, yes.
Um, I, I was going to ask a question of the council. I didn't know if we're going to keep the um, our, our folks online, but let me, let me ask the, the council then. Um, I've got in my head a summary of what we covered and what I've heard. I just want to bounce against you and the kind of question. Uh, one is that with the UGA and annexation, we definitely focus on all opportunities for multifamily and affordability. Uh, second, what I heard is that we look to rezone current built areas uh, to allow for multifamily, even if it's for some period in the future elsewhere. And this is what I heard. So again, you correctly wrong. And third, um, uh, is a question. Is there any thought of commercial? We definitely had a big uh, talk maybe ten, several years ago about um, commercial adds something other than property taxes to the company revenue. Is there any thought of setting aside UGA for commercial other than, you know, in the floodplain, right? Um, so I'm just asking for the count, for giving us guidance. And then the-
I'll just address that last thing is that uh, the Community Development Committee is uh, currently as we have time, uh, looking at the UGA and kind of coming up with some general ideas. And I believe that uh, commercial is going to be a part of what we're going to be looking at especially there. Um, as for other parts of the city, uh, I, I won't speak to it yet uh, for myself. But I do believe that commercial is going to be something we'll be looking at for uh, the UGA uh, as we continue our work.
Okay. And a last point, and uh, it's perhaps controversial. Let me just throw it out there to channel Stephen Covey's Begin with the End in Mind. Um, Snoqualmie was built as a high-end place. So we've got a median income of a hundred and sixty thousand. I'm pretty sure that poll was King County wide, which has median income of a hundred thousand roughly. It's like ninety-nine, one fifty-nine. And sure, um, if you're in a position of uh, you know, if you're living in San Jose, you'd love to live in Palo Alto and Silicon Valley, right? So I bet there's a lot of folks in King County loved to live in Snoqualmie. I mean, um, what we're discussing would be to get the median income from say one sixty today to something like one thirty. That would be an outcome. And we also talked about the ninety percent of the people roughly going out to work who live here and the ninety percent coming in. And that goes to my commercial thing. The reason people go out to work is so that when they come back to, they can have their single family home in a high-end place and enjoy it. And they're working a high-tech place where they want to get away from Bellevue, wherever the high-rise. They're working in Amazon or in Tech World to come out here. So again, what does, what does success look like, right? Is it uh, you know, fifty fifty? And um, if so, we need to talk about, we need to wrap it with commercial as well because those numbers were thrown out there as something necessarily undesirable. And I'm just asking, is, is that the council's position or and is that what you're asking the planning commission to address? But it's kind of a rhetorical question, but I just thought to throw it out there. What is the end? What does success look like from a planning perspective that you're asking us to provide options to?
I certainly don't want to speak for the council. I'll just speak for myself on uh, one of those items has to do with walkability. That if we provide a higher density of residential uh, in a place that's close to um, to jobs, whether it's close to the business park or center or even downtown, uh, that that could uh, potentially get into a little bit of that disparity between people who are commit- commuting into the city uh, and out of the city. Um, and um, at any rate, so that would, that would address that. As to specific percentages, uh, I certainly don't want to put a number on it myself. It's, I think also partly up to the planning commission to uh, to give us as the council uh, some idea of uh, of your work. And then we can provide comment, send it back and kick it back and forth a little bit um, as, as needed. Um, but I think that to, to some degree to get to what you're saying is exactly that rhetorical nature that we need to decide as a council, some of that guidance to help kind of give you some guardrails as a planning commission. And that's still work that is to come. Fortunately, we don't have to get the comprehensive plan done tomorrow. It's a couple of year long process. Um, but it is something that we need to dig into as a council. Uh, yeah, Councilmember Mayhew.
Yeah. So I think um, I think you're putting your finger on something that's just key to the whole planning process. Where do we want to end? Um, I think uh, I think certainly this committee of the council is focused on spending time on that um, this year. I think um, I think it's our belief and hope that the full council will um, be eager to hear recommendations from the committee and then gives and have discussion at the council level and try and give some of that guidance back. But I also think that um, to really figure this out, especially when we think about the UGA, I think there's a lot of public engagement that we need to do. I think that all of us struggle a bit to know what the community wants. Um, you know, it, it's you sometimes find out fairly quickly what the community doesn't want when something comes forward and people come to like, no, 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 not that. Uh, but I think the much tougher thing is to find out, well, what, what do you want? What, what, what would you like to see? So I, I've been pushing for quite some time to try and get more community involvement in that. And, and my hope is that as we go through this um, comp plan uh, relook that maybe the and maybe that's something that there's a role for the planning commission as well to try and get more public input on that very question. What would the public like to see? There's a lot of pressure on us to go a very specific direction. If you did the math during these presentations tonight, you actually would have realized that it would take one hundred percent of all new development to actually meet the goals that are being pushed at us by the PRC. Something that just simply isn't going to happen.
Right.
So now the question is, okay, you got that pressure going that way. But what does the community want? And how do we find sort of a path that uh, uh, encourages, because I think a lot of the underlying concepts here were, were absolutely right. You know, let's give clear signals to developers. What, what would we approve? How? Um, you, you know, what sort of things, what's the looking, is he, I think the recommendation was all the way down even to the look and feel and the facing, what directions and all that sort of thing. I think the more we can do in that regard, the more we'll get the community that our residents want, the future community that our residents want. Um, but I think there's a lot to, to deal with here, but I do think that public engagement is a big part of it. And um, but yeah, I think the council engaging and then whatever planning commission can do to help. I think all of us, I think have a big hill to climb in trying to learn that.
And um, perhaps building on that a little bit, uh, one of the things that uh, our committee should perhaps look at is instead of just coming up with one proposal for the UGA and saying, hey, look, this is the thing we came up with. If I had to guess, I'd say that we'd probably get a lot of negative reaction to that, no matter what we came up with. So perhaps the, what we should do is come up with a number of alternatives. Um, I want to give the number of how many, say three alternatives for people to react to. So they could say, okay, more of this, less of this. Um, but I think that we're less likely to end up with a full-blown backlash to whatever it is if we come up with a number of alternatives as a menu. Yeah. Oh, yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Johnson, I was just going to mention uh, to follow up on Councilmember, uh, Member Mayh- Mayhew, sorry. Uh, that April sixth, we'll have our first public open house here at City Hall. So welcome everyone to, you know, come if they'd like. I know there's issues with too many council members or too many people showing up at the same time, but we could deal with that if, if, if that was the desire of, of, you know, council members to attend and or planning commissioners.
And we could just notice that it was a public meeting and then it's fine. And that's far enough out in advance. I think we're, we'd be clear if we did. So I, I wonder if we just want to preemptively just do that, just notice as a public meeting? Yeah. So, yeah, uh, Councilmember Christensen.
I was just gonna say that I agree. I think it's really important that we get as much public input as we can. And I think that um, it's also incredibly important to give a public a number of options and ask them to weigh in as well once. I, I guess basically to ensure that we have public input at multiple stages throughout this. But I think that we will probably get the most feedback, I think if we can present a few different options for folks to choose from and really weigh in on and make sure that they feel as though they're included and making decisions that are going to be really huge as we go forward. Um, yeah, I think it'll be great to split that up with, with planning commission and wait here and wait at council as well. So it'll definitely be a, a moving target as we try to figure out where, where it needs to go and what the pitfalls are.
Yeah, and there are a number of bills that the legislature right now, some of which seem uh, fairly likely to pass that are going to have some level of impact. Uh, I believe HB eleven ten was recently amended. That's the uh, one that essentially requires middle housing be allowed in all residential zones. Uh, I believe that that one was recently amended to raise the population threshold of the city to twenty-five thousand. Uh, so if, if it goes forward like that, then uh, we would not be in that category. But you know, it hasn't become law yet. So who knows? Maybe it wouldn't have passed at all. But at any rate, there are some other ones that could have a significant impact on us. Uh, the legislature is taking this issue of housing affordability very seriously this year. And I look forward to seeing what they come up with. Whether it applies to us or not, it still gives us a finger in the wind as far as what um, the state is, is pushing us toward. Uh, Councilmember Christensen.
I just had a quick question about that one. I couldn't recall if that was the one that also required or basically took the population and summed it with neighboring towns as well. Is that the bill that does that?
I don't think so.
No?
Uh, as, as originally written HB eleven ten would, would said that if you are in a a city that is in an urban growth area contiguous with the city over three hundred thousand people, meaning King County. Then this applies to you no matter how big you are. As Councilmember Johnson just noted, it, it has been rewritten to change the population threshold. Because Snoqualmie is in the discontinuous part of the UGA, it's questionable whether that as originally written would have applied to us at all because, because we have the big gap between Issaquah and us. Um, but with the population threshold being adjusted, it would, wouldn't apply to us anyway. But nothing's final until it's final with the legislature.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think I've stirred the pot enough.
Yeah, thank you for stirring the pot. That's kind of what we needed. Uh, okay. Any other uh, comments or questions? Uh, still not seeing anyone online with their hand up.
Do I have a moment of indulgence here?
Yeah, sure, Mr. Rogers.
Um, I did, I did want to let everybody know, uh, this will be my last meeting with the city. I'm uh, decided to accept a new position with Washington State Ferries. So I'll start that in a few weeks, but I did want to thank all of you. I've, I've worked with, I think with most of you for at least a, a year or two now and, and some of you for my entire career at the city of Snoqualmie. Uh, I know Councilmember Mayhew came on the the council shortly after I started. The mayor came on council right before I started. Um, it, but it has been a pleasure and I, I really enjoyed my time here and working with all of you. I think you're in great hands with Emily and, and the mayor and Mike and, and Bob over here as well. Um, so I just, I just wanted to mostly say thank you and I, and I appreciate working with all of you and, and I really want this city to continue being a great place because I am definitely going to miss being in Snoqualmie and in the Snoqualmie Valley.
Wow. Well, thank you.
Sorry to, no, no, I bit it down.
Well, I guess it's happy for you. So congratulations.
It is. It and like I said, I, I have really enjoyed my time here and I'm going to get slightly emotional already. So.
Yeah, you're going to get me going too. So maybe we should just cut off the waterworks here.
But you know, I, I, like I said, I mean, I want to thank all of you. I definitely want to thank, you know, especially the mayor for you know, I've had a lot of, a lot of opportunity here and the mayor has been in both your timeline council and now as the mayor, it's been a big part of that. And I'm definitely going to miss you all and, and the work we do here and, and this community. So it's hard to turn down a new opportunity sometimes though.
Yeah, for sure. All right.
Well, we wish you the best of luck.
Yeah. Yeah, don't be a stranger.
Definitely not. Got too many things going on here that I'm going to want to come back and show my kids and just experience myself, you know, and do groundbreakings on various projects. I'll be here, worked hard on a lot of them. So.
Yeah, we'll say, yeah, this was the thing that I did. Well, on that note, if there is nothing else, we will consider uh, this meeting adjourned at seven forty-six. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Congrats, Jason. Sorry, I've been on mute. My cord started kicking my butt as the night went on.
No problem. Thank you. It's been great work with you, Steve.
Yeah, best of luck.